Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 9:30. And I'd like to start with the land acknowledgement. The municipality of Jasper respectfully acknowledges that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper on Treaty Six and Treaty Eight territories, as well as Matee Region Four. This land is the traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Dinesa, Nahawak, Basque, Anishraabi, Sycam, Quick, and Stony Nakota and Matee. I'm wondering if there are any additions to or changes to the agenda? If not, is there... Oh, sorry.
I just want to say no changes, but pending something on going on with my work, I may have to depart of the meeting. So I'll pre-apologize for the interruption. It's an honor to have you here.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us know. Is there a councillor ready to make a motion to approve the agenda of May 10? There aren't? All in favor? Is there any business arising from the minutes? If none, we will move then to presentations. Oh, sorry, I missed. It is... Sorry, I missed that. Is there a councillor prepared to offer a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2022? Your case councillor Wilson, all in favor? Now we'll move on to the presentation from the Jasper Municipal Library. Welcome, Mrs. Tom and Mrs. Melnick. Thank you.
Good morning, your worship of councillors and community members. I am Joyce Melnick, municipality Jasper library board chair. I was new today. Good morning, your worship, councillors and community members. I am Joyce Melnick, municipality Jasper library board chair. And with me today is our director of library services, Andrew Tom. We are here today to give a brief overview of the library's past year. We have chosen to use the spring 2021 to spring 2022 period as it lines up with major public health measures changes, which directly impacted library services. In the almost 80 years we have been operating, library service in Jasper has changed a lot. Jasper is a unique community located in a national park, which is a world heritage site and home to people from all over the world. The Jasper Municipal Library serves all sectors of the community to diverse and mobile population, including residents of Jasper, seasonal workers, and visitors. In February of 2021, we adopted a staffing schedule that would work whether the library was open or close to the public. This helped us to adapt to the changing nature of library operations in order to meet public health regulations, as well as the mental and physical health needs of library staff and users. Anytime restrictions changed, libraries would often have to wait a couple of days before there was clarification on how the new restrictions would apply to us. For example, the rep program initially was applied to libraries. However, several days later, they're removed, acknowledging that public libraries are legislated to serve everyone. On September 14, 2021, we were able to increase the hours open to the public and started the current Tuesday to Saturday schedule. All public libraries are core, have core functions such as circulating items, answering questions, assisting visitors, computer and Wi-Fi access, and office services such as photocopying, printing, and faxing. In addition, the library regulation specifies that all library boards will create, through public consultation, a plan of service to guide their operations in meeting community-specific needs. The plan of service must be updated at minimum every five years. During the community consultation process in 2019, four priorities were identified and goals and objectives were developed. Mid-2020, as the pandemic and its impacts were better understood, these goals and objectives were reevaluated. Priority one, being an accessible community gathering space where people feel safe and welcome. Safety during the pandemic had a very different look. Library staff had to monitor the library space in a more restrictive way. This level of safety did impact the sense of comfort in the space and limited interactions between visitors. For some, the restrictions helped make them feel safer. Masks, barriers, and physical distancing were our common sight. Masks are still welcome for both staff and visitors. The last two years have seen dramatic fluctuations in visitor numbers. We anticipate higher numbers in 2020 as 2022 continues and tourists to Jasper increase. Physical barriers, masking, physical distancing, limits to numbers in the library all decreased the opportunities for interaction and engagement between staff and visitors and between visitors. With the lifting of restrictions on March 1, 2022, and removal of Plexiglas barriers at the circulation desk, we've seen a dramatic change in how visitors interact with staff and each other. With capacity restrictions and physical distancing requirements, we had to get creative. The "home is" community poetry project involved people filling out a sticky note, completing the sentence "home is", when they brought in a donation for the food bank. Local author Paulette Blanchard-Dubé used those sentences to create several poems. On Parks Day, we set up a paper airplane testing activity that was available all afternoon for families to drop in and do. Culture Days, including the musical performance with Mary-Pierre and Christine, took place in Robson Park to allow for physical distancing and greater numbers. Priority two, offering opportunities for young children to develop reading and listening skills. Library staff were frequently asked if we were going to do online programming for children and families. We did discuss the idea and talked to our regular families. The feedback was a solid no. It was felt that children were getting too much screen time and parents needed help offering activities that encouraged kids to get outside. Library staff then focused on offline activities and kits that children could do themselves or with their families. Six lovable activity kits were developed, four in English, two in French, including theme stories and activities. In December of 2021, we offered craft kits with all supplies included. This helped us use up some supplies that had been in the cupboards gathering dust. Priority three, engaging school-aged children and teens. Elementary school aged children continue to be a large part of our visitors. They are a relatively easy group to engage with, and we love to have their laughter and enthusiasm in the library. In September 2021, when the physical distancing by household measure came into effect, we noticed an increase in the number of parents visiting with their school-aged children. Often, these parents didn't have a library membership, so it offered us a chance to show how membership could be useful for them. Seeing the adults in their lives reading is a big encouragement. Unfortunately, the physical distancing by household measure had a negative impact on our teen visitors. This is a group who usually visit with friends to browse, hang out, or study. Having to physically distance made the library an unwelcoming space. Fortunately, with the lifting of restrictions, we're starting to see more teens in the library. Reading challenges are for everyone. Ages four to eight teens and adults were encouraged to participate in reading challenges in the summer of 2021. Staff displayed books for the challenges, but the books were also available to all library users. Priority four, pursuing personal interests and self-development. Whether learning to garden, attending to mental health, or planning trips of a lifetime, our visitors were able to find something to help them. Some of that learning was helped by our experiments with video, such as the Home Plant Tour posted on our YouTube channel and the Genius Locai Speaker Series, part of our Writer and Resident Project, which was livestreamed on Facebook. Jasper is a reading community. When the library was close to the public, our users embraced contactless pickup and e-resources for newspapers, magazines, books, audiobooks, and more. We have set and continue to set circulation records during the last year. The increased use of e-resources during 2020 continued in 2021. We would see a drop when the library was open for in-person visits as physical media continues to be the preferred format. As 2022 continues to unfold, in addition to continuing to meet our plan of service goals, we eagerly anticipate offering library services to a greater number of visitors. Thank you for the opportunity to present today, and we look forward to seeing you in the library. We are open to questions if anybody has any questions or comments.
Thank you so much. And we're ready to accept any questions. Councillor Johnson?
Just grateful to have you here in person. And I think that... I don't know if either of you partake in any storytelling sessions or story time at the library that I can sit there and sit here for quite a while. Thanks.
I've listened to story time at the library.
Councillor Wilson?
It's not a question, it's just a comment on visitor count. And that it, I just wanted to suggest it looks quite promising that we're kind of returning to not pre-COVID numbers, but quite a bit higher visitor count than the last two years. And I guess my question, if there was one, would be are we forecasting that... They're forecasting even currently very forecasting a higher than 2021 visitor count throughout the year.
By the end of 2022, I'm sure that will be 2021. The summer, already we're seeing visitors, like out-of-town visitors. So I think that that will definitely increase our visitor count. The other thing, the other portion of the population that we're starting to see is the seasonal workers. We've had a couple of years where there hasn't been that many, and we've already started seeing a greater number of those. So I think that will continue to push our visitor numbers up.
And prior to COVID, would international visitors be a contingent of those numbers as well? Because I think we're seeing a lot more international travelers again, so.
Yes, oh, for sure. We're one of the places that people can come and sit and use Wi-Fi, and which is free and available 24/7. So this morning was a perfect example. I came up and there was a camper outside so that they could use the Wi-Fi. So those things are going, are coming back for sure.
Thank you for the report. I have two questions. You've ordered the priorities, one, two, three, and four. And is that in priority? So first priority, second priority? You had to give them numbers, you had to present them in some order, but are they reflective of a prioritization of the priorities?
I... I think it comes back to we had to number them. But they are all equal. One of the biggest comments we get is the enjoyment of space for the library. People enjoy coming in, it feels welcoming, and it's something that we worked hard to create. It's that first impression. So it sort of made sense to put it at the beginning of priorities. It impacts everything else.
Well, I appreciate that. And I thought it sensed that you did, whether intentionally or inadvertently, put them in appropriate priorities. So community first, then kids, younger, older, and then self-interest and awareness. I thought they were an excellent ordering of priorities, so thank you. The other question I had was, when you speak of the library as a community gathering space, you indicated that users prefer to interact with people in real time. So they prefer to contact by telephone, for example, rather than by email. I appreciate that. I wonder though whether you can, through knowledge of the uses that people make of the library, relate that to the tools that your users may have. Are they forced to call and speak to a person because they don't have the tools to contact you through email or internet? Are we serving a public that is underserved electronically?
I... That's a good question. I hadn't thought about it. Given that many of the people who come in with specific questions often are our seniors or perhaps lower income, or maybe English is not their first language, I would say that that's probably the behind-the-scenes reason. That same crowd is probably, I would get more phone calls from seniors or somebody who's maybe just having a temporary pickup with online resources or something, or somebody who wants a really quick answer. But I would say that the people who come in are the people that need that assistance because they don't have access to Wi-Fi or computer support. Just need that assistance.
And I expect that those statistics are available somewhere, maybe not in this report, but you know how many are coming in to access email, for example.
Yeah, we keep track of all of that. And often, it's like stores, right? You come in for one thing and you do several things while you're there. Or at least we hope you're going to do several things while you're there.
Well, thank you both very much.
Councillor Schmuggen?
Thank you. I'm always intrigued of, you know, better ways to, finding better ways to communicate and engage. I know that TikTok is fairly new to some of us, and it's been around for a while. But I was, I was quite interested to see, you know, what kind of feedback that you got through that platform. And is it something that is applicable to like keeping teens relevant with what's going on at the library or engaging and maybe provoking more interest?
How do I phrase this? The teens thought we were too old. So relevance may be an issue there. But TikTok has developed sub-communities, like there is a Fox app and that kind of thing. So I have a staff member who follows it, at least to see what the trends are. And we might be more, our patrons might be more willing to engage us in similar ways on Instagram or Facebook. So we do watch it for trends, but we have been told that perhaps we're too old to be there.
Yeah, I knew I was walking on something, and I said that. I just thought I'd ask because I found that interesting. But it's always good to try new ideas. Appreciate that.
We're gonna try.
Councillor Hall? Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm wondering, my question is, are you feeling confident with staff for the summer? Are you still have positions open?
Like everybody in town. I have posted, we did get our summer job grant. So that job is posted. We have a casual position posted. And as of this morning, I will be posting a part-time position as well. So just like everybody else, and a bit of a crunch. We'll keep the doors open, the lights on.
Councillor Wilson?
I just wanted to let you know, inadvertently to part in one of your initiatives this last weekend. You know, I've been doing a lot of reading through council. I think I myself pretty dry, but I found myself on Saturday morning, reliving my childhood, reading comics that my daughter and son had bought after pre-comic book days. Appreciate that. That was quite enjoyable.
Excellent. That was the hope.
Any further questions? Can I call for... Can I call for a motion to accept the presentation from Jasper Municipal Library for information? Councillor Hall, all in favor? Thank you so much. That was a wonderful presentation. Very well organized and articulate.
But councillor Wilson says that most of the stuff he has to read is dry. He didn't read your report.
That brings us to the department reports and a report from Department of Finance and Administration, Mrs. Melnick. Welcome, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Good morning, council. Thank you very much. As you have seen over the weekend, the report presented, I'll just highlight a few of the key points within the report. One thing especially to note is that the assessments are on the website so that anyone can access any of the assessments available within the town site. We've been doing that for about eight years now, so they are searchable. So you can go in by role number, by address, and find what you're looking for. So everything is on the website for that. And just to add on to this, as now I'm doing a quarterly report, the tax rate file will soon be coming to council. And then the tax notices would be then mailed out in June for a payment date of July 15th. Just to add on to the taxation part of the report. As many have probably noticed, utilities for January and February were mailed out slightly late this year. They were mailed out slightly late this year, and that was due to a finance, financial software causing us some grief with the new levy report. So it is not calculating correctly. And though we thought it might be a simple fix because it looks like it would just be a calculating report in the background like Excel would, it is not so simple, and it's causing us even more problems. So what we had to do in the interim is, like everyone has seen, we had to go in and manually adjust them so that people would see them in a timely manner. And we sent out a notice to explain what was going on with the situation, as well as what we did to fix the problem for the meantime. Hopefully, we have that result for the next billing cycle. However, that has yet to be confirmed. We do have a signed-off template, however, we have not heard back since then. So as I hear back more, then I can inform council if we will have it resolved for next time. Hopefully, we do, as that was very time-consuming. Our audit has been ongoing, so our financial statements are soon to be completed. We have requested an extended deadline with municipal affairs. Now, our auditors have done this with due diligence in finalizing our reports only once we're able to consolidate with Wazilla Head Regional Waste Management Authority. They have yet to have their reports approved, and they will be doing so June 7th. So then our auditors will be coming to present ours. The municipal affairs has noted that they are aware of this and that they are fine, and it does not put the municipality in any kind of a bad standing or whatnot. There's information about IT on here as well from our IT department. And so just having a few technical issues with my report here. Also, just to highlight our business licenses over the past few years, as you can see, there is a bit of a decline in 2020, but they've reinstated a bit, coming back up from 729 up to 763. So that's promising for our community. In funding news, just to highlight our municipal sustainability initiative on the operating capital side this year in 2022, municipality will see a contribution coming in the amount of $728,701. And on the operating side, $61,776. And then, as council formerly with no federal gas taxes, now called the Canada Community Building Fund, they will be allocating an amount of $275,060 to the municipality in 2022. Then, for another note, as you would normally see in the budget process anyway, there's Alberta School Foundation requisition amounts in here, as well as Evergreens, Parks Canada, land rent, and policing. So those are listed for your information. Some are yet to be determined. And for an additional note, many might know already, but Jasper Victim Services has dissolved in 2022. And the funds have been returned to the municipality. As there was a process in which the victim services did come to the municipality and request for some funding this year. They did receive a funding, but then it was returned to the municipality. So those have gone back to us for now. And the province will no longer be funding support, but Jasper will be indirectly supported through victim, victim victim services at the moment. And on the adventure side of things, I've attached our draft debt limits for the year end of 2021. They'll be formalized when you see the financial statements coming from the auditors in June. But to highlight a little bit extra on that is that in December of 2021, the government of Alberta decided to stop offering below-market rates to local authorities. This decision backtracks some promises made when the Alberta Capital Finance Authority dissolved and went to the province. So there has been a letter sent to the government about Alberta asking for background information. As I hear more about this, I'll inform council. And additionally, to support the end of my report, as I was not here for presenting the financial reports, and Mr. Given was kind enough to present them for me, there was a note made that there was an incorrect number at the end of the net surplus and deficit on the March 20... Sorry, March 31st, 2022. And this came due to the changing budget being put into the software. We had four lines that were not calculated correctly. And change in the budget has been since rectified. So I decided to include them so that you can see the restated statement. And that is it for my report. I'm available for any questions should you have any. Thank you. And that is it for my report and available for any questions should you have. Thank you.
I'll open the floor then to questions. Counselor, Counselor Hurandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meloncheck. I'm just curious, with the, um, decline and then, um, the increase in business losses, is this kind of based on home-based businesses, home and com or store fronts, um, general breakdown? I'm just curious.
Unfortunately, I do not have that information. I can't like and provide it at this, um, um, update. Um, I didn't break it down to that point of, of information.
I just thought it'd be interesting to see actually where the increase of our businesses come from. And I have one other question. Is that okay, Ms. Meloncheck? And just on our debt limits, um, right now we have sitting at 13 million, six one four. That's where we can go to. So with the activity renovations, that five something, that wouldn't be calculated in there, am I correct?
Correct. It isn't calculated into that amount. Um, it would be calculated once the debt is taken.
So then that five plus one million, if the government's law relates to it, there will be a meta higher interest rates.
Yes, potentially unless we're able to secure something elsewhere, but at all the interest rates have been going up. It just depends what happens in the future with the interest rates. Yes. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Nelson.
My question is just regarding the utility, uh, bills that had gone out, uh, and so, you know, understandably there was a mistake in, in some, or and you had to manually, uh, do many of them and I, and mine included. I, I noticed that there was a, you know, manually, uh, calculated. Um, but my question is, were there some that went out prior to, uh, catching the, uh, the hiccup in the system? Because, um, I've heard through the grapevine from a few people that they've had a quite a large jump, uh, in utilities, um, and, you know, like astronomically large and they've called and talked about the bill. There's been some credit, uh, allocated out. So I was just wondering if some of them had gone out prior to catching it, but if not, um, yeah, I guess.
Um, Counselor Wilson, um, not that I am aware of, uh, they, um, went all out at the same time and, uh, they were held on to and we went through them manually. They weren't calculating incorrectly. They just weren't calculating into both areas, which the number was displayed. So there was one area that was showing the correct amount. And then what was done is we, um, took the amount that was correctly displayed and then moved it into the other area by widening out the area that wasn't grabbing the full calculation so that it wasn't misleading and confusing to see two different numbers owing, um, or due. Um, so, and yes, not that I am aware of any, and the, um, high, the high rates that you might have seen might have been due to leaders, which are credited in the next billing cycle and that people will see then credited on to their March, April cycle that will coming, will be coming out next.
Yeah, okay, great. That, that clarifies it a lot. Um, because I, I, you know, I haven't talked to a few people. Uh, I probably didn't inquire with them that they were using a leader or not. So to compare, say, last billing cycle with, uh, this billing cycle, it's kind of a very poor comparison, rather. If you were running a leader last year at that same billing cycle, that's probably a better comparison, uh, with regards to the, the new utility rates.
Yes, Deputy, um, Waxer through to Counselor Wilson. That's exactly it. You would want to look back through January and February of 2021 versus your 2022 years to see, um, what the difference was there, to see what the changes were in the amounts due to the new CCC rates being applied.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, and through you to Mrs. Meloncheck. Under information technology, just from my own curiosity, um, there are three new software, Fuel Master Server, BMS system and SCADA system. Um, what do all those things do?
Deputy Mayor through to, um, Counselor Melnick. Um, so BMS, and I apologize for this. I, uh, forget to, um, put the full wording behind things. Sometimes building maintenance software, so that is a consolidation of all of the building maintenance so that, um, our, um, maintenance can take, take control of the, this, the building systems. Um, SCADA is actually a water system. And Fuel Master is, um, for the wastewater treatment plant and it's a little bit harder for me to explain. I would have to ask, um, um, uh, our Director of Operations to go into that one a bit more, uh, for the correct, um, exactness of what it does, but they are all, were controlling systems.
Great, thank you. Um, I do have a also follow-up question on the Jasper Victim Services monies ever returned to the municipality. Um, are those segregated and designated for a specific purpose, uh, to support victim services?
Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Melnick. Um, they were in the sense of, um, the budget as they were approved. However, they have come back and, um, they would go back to the municipality as in general. Um, and it, because it was for them, it, it would have to be then, um, decided by council to do something else with the funds and would change it within the respect of, uh, the budget, but at the timing, because it was their request, that's how it was allocated within the budget. Yeah.
May I make one follow-up, Deputy Mayor Waxer? Um, what dollar amount are we looking at from victim services in general?
It was just over $12,000.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Island.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. If I may, through you to Mrs. Meloncheck, I have about four questions, but proceed, um. If I could begin, uh, carrying on from the question that Counselor Color and we asked about business licenses. Um, I too am interested in some of those details, but I would like to know whether that information is readily accessible. I, I don't want to ask for something that would explain um, test the capacity, the limits of, of an already tested department. So to get the sort of information we're looking for, uh, will that involve a lot of detailed time and effort on learning that for yourself?
Deputy Mayor, through you, um, your worship, um, I know that some of it can be easily brought, broken down, whether or not we get into, um, additional, um, breaking down like PHA compared to, um, the non-res safe, um, in the downtown core would be easy enough, um, getting it to, I can't say exactly the amount of time that it would, would take, but, um, yes, we would try to break it down and make it as efficient as possible.
Well, I would appreciate that. Anecdotally, um, it has come to my attention that some of the increase may be simply the result of our own activities rather than real economic activity in the sense that I believe now we are requiring landlords who have no other business other than to rent space in the building to have a business license for that purpose. So the activity has been ongoing for years, but hasn't been required to have a license. And similarly, businesses that have been operating from multiple locations may now be required to have a business license for each of those locations. So although the business license, um, issuance has increased, it doesn't necessarily affect, um, an increase in economic activity in the town. But again, um, I would make a request for those details only subject to reasonable capacity. When it's going to come back and say, we don't have time for that, I will accept that. I did have a couple of other questions, so, um, and again, um, I will start with one that may impact capacity. And so I, I won't make a real request, but you mentioned the fact that assessments are available online and have been for about eight years. Um, and if you want dry reading, that's where you can find it, but it is a wealth of information. And I wonder whether it would be possible for those non-resi- those residential assessments that have a non-residential component. Um, and I know that when you look online, you can see a property and it has two assessments, both for the land and the improvements. I, I wonder whether somebody could just add an asterisk to indicate which part of the residential assessment is in fact attributed to non-residential assessment, because I know there is still an ongoing issue in the community about whether PHAs, for example, are in equitable treatment. And I think just reading the assessment role helps resolve that question, but I don't remember what that would be involved in making that more clear.
Deputy through your worship, um, currently they are listed, um, for PHAs or any, um, residential with non-res business occurring within. Um, they are currently segregated by having two line items. So you'll see that role appear twice on that spreadsheet. Um, so, um, if your role number is 0850 and you have a business within, you'll see it broken down on the next line, um, as what part is broken apart for that business.
I agree and I thank you for that. And I appreciate this there. My only comment is that I think it lacks a degree of clarity. I, I think for a lot of people reading that, you wouldn't understand that one of them is reflective of the non-residential assessment for the others is not. So, um, maybe just some sort of footnote that helps explain, I thought would be advantageous. I, I wanted to just comment on your advice that the audit is delayed because the financial statements from West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority are not yet available. Edson has, I think, over the years experienced similar problems that I think always been a target to file late, but the good news is that I think with the administrative work of the West Yellowhead Regional Waste Management Authority shifting to Yellowhead County, we might expect in two, three years, more timely preparation of the financials for the authority and that should solve that, that problem. So we're aware and those of us who sit on the Regional Waste Management Authority are aware of the challenges that it presents. My last question, if I may, Deputy Mayor, uh, through you to Mrs. Meloncheck, is you commented about the the termination of the Alberta Capital Finance, um, authority. And so that loans that we would otherwise have secured through Alberta Capital Finance are no longer available and rates are climbing. I think that that affects new borrowing, but not existing borrowing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Um, anything that has been secured in the past is, is, um, still secured at those rates.
And you've indicated that a letter has been written, like that's the letter from administration. It seems to me that that is worthy potentially of an advocacy effort on behalf of council. So if you wanted to present to us, um, something suggesting that we too engage with, uh, the relevant ministers and our, and LA. Because again, from my perspective, this is once again solving a provincial level problem on the backs of municipal passports. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Counselor Demoda and then Counselor Hall.
Thank you. I'll, uh, I'll start with a couple of questions and then I'll get asked them all. I'll come back. But thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Uh, through you to Administration. Deputy, uh, Mrs. Meloncheck. A little bit of clarification for the public on service on debt limit versus service on debt. Just a, um, a little bit of a refresher for us, because I, I'm still a little bit vague in understanding the, um, the difference between the two of them.
Counselor Waxer through to Counselor Demoda. Um, thank you for your question. Um, just might, uh, reference our financial statements. Um, it, it's explained really, really well on, um, how they're calculated there and it's written out in the public. Should have written it out within the context of the report. I apologize um, for that. Now they're calculated off of the years um, that the financial statements, past years' reporting on, off of the revenue that was accounted for. Um, so if you, um, now I'm bringing up the correct wording just because I don't want to set my words, um. It is calculated off that revenue at one point for the debt limit itself. So debt limit means the amount that you're allowed to take out. Right? And service on the debt limit is, um, the amount that you are allowed to pay, um, on finance, um, financing. So the interest rates within the context of the debt. Um, and those rates are, sorry, one point. Just want to read it because I don't like. I don't have it on the top of my head, sorry. So debt limit is calculated at 1.5 times the revenue of the municipality. And the debt service, service limit is calculated at point two five times that such revenue. Include incurring debt beyond these limits requires approval by the Minister of Municipal Affairs. These thresholds are guidelines used by Alberta Municipal Affairs to identify, um, municipalities which could be at financial risk. Um, if further debt is required. So this, this is calculation used to determine a proper amount of debt limits that you will see, um, that are used in, um, these terms. So I just wanted to read it exactly how it's stated. Um, it's really important, um, as municipality to stay within these debt limits, um, for that security.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, I think I think what I was, uh, trying to get, and I appreciate that information because it does help me ask the question better. So the service on debt limit here that we're, we're looking at, uh, on page 25 of 40 within the agenda, where it says the municipality of Jasper as of December 31st of 2021, uh, service. So the, our overall debt limit is, uh, over $25 million. So, and as far as our overall budget goes, we have taken out, uh, almost 12 million of that from how I read that. So we still have, uh, room for, uh, 13 plus million, uh, to take, to basically borrow a case. So for this year, uh, how I understand it is that, um, the servicing that we're the servicing that we're allowed and capable of on our debt limit is $4.2 million. And the actual servicing on the debt that we've taken out this year is 1.3. I think the only reason, the only thing I'm having confusion on is the that $2.9 million, that $3 million, that's the total service on debt limit remaining. That means we could still put another $3 million in if we wanted to. Is that how that works? I don't know how that, that bottom line. That's where I kind of got confused. I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I know it's a difficult question, but do, are there any other counselors that have an understanding of how that works in your head?
Yeah, I know. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. To me, it means that we could carry annually another $2.9 million in debt. We could borrow thirteen and a half million and finance it annually with debt creepings. So then another 2.9, and that would take us up to our maximum service debt limit of 4.2 million. So that's what we're talking about.
That's right. That's what I thought, and I just, I didn't know how to ask it or word that. So, did he say that, does he understand that correctly?
I'm sorry, Counselor Waxer, through to Counselor Demota. I did not get all of the context of your question. Could you repeat it? I was looking up something to reference to at the same point, but if you could repeat it, I might be able to assist a bit more.
I think that the mayor kind of clarified it for me. I was just looking at the total service on the debt limit remaining because at first I was having trouble differentiating between service on debt limit and service on debt. And then the difference between the two is what we're, we have room to still put towards, but we're not. That's just the room that we have. We're actually servicing the debt at 1.3 million. But we could essentially annually have another, the ability to almost $3 million. Sorry for taking up your extra time, but it is a little
Yes, no, that is correct.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'm just going to ask another question following up on Counselor Demota's question. So basically, the $3 million remaining, does that sit in an account waiting to, it just, we can't, we, okay. My, that's good. I'm glad that was all this length, actually, was a bit more clear. My question to you is the money that was returned from victim services. I know you said it just sits there until council decides, or would administration plan for it come to us? Or has this happened before?
Deputy Waxer through to Counselor Paul. No, this, I have not seen this in my time here. It generally would not be a recommendation per se from administration. It would be, it sits in a counselor external contribution area. So as a subdepartment of council, so it's an area where council would decide on, on if or should they want, you want to allocate it elsewhere, or maybe it not be for the 2022 year. It's back within the funding of the municipal funds. However, it would be something that council would look at. And if it wasn't used this, this year, would it just roll into next year as revenue and just get added into the big pot or would it stay allocated for whatever you just said? Counsel, Counselor Hall through Deputy Waxer. It's, it would be part and parcel of the financial statements. It would be rolled in and looked at as an expense that wasn't incurred and therefore be part and parcel of whatever comes at year end with accumulated surplus deficit. Thank you for that.
Mayor Hyland. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, just arising from Counselor Paul's question. I would like, I may just add some clarity for the public record. And it's not a question for Mrs. Melunchak, but as I read the report and listened to the report, although Jasper Victim Services either has been in this process of being dissolved, the funds that are to be returned to the municipality are not Jasper Victim Services public funds. It is just the municipal contribution. So at budget time, council approved about $12 million. In fact, Victim Services has other funds. I want no suggestion that those funds are being returned to the municipality. And I think when Mrs. Melunchak paper reported this, it was clear enough, but when you read the report, it's, it could be subject to misinterpretation once on the agenda. And so the funds to be returned are the funds that council allocated in the budget of approximately $12 million.
That'd be amazing.
Yes, okay, fair enough. Thank you. All things to play.
Counselor Demota.
Well, I'm glad that Counselor Hall brought up that question. Maybe that could be discussion for council at a future committee, the whole one direction that we might want to take with that, or whether it'd be better to keep it in reserves for the time being, but I think it'd be a healthy conversation, at least a debate regardless. I'd be happy to move that or just ask for that somewhere down the road, but I'd like to get a clearer picture of what that might encompass for administration. So probably wait for a little gap when our audit's done and there's a little bit more of a clear horizon for us. So not something that I want to move today, but definitely for consideration.
Counselor Melon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'm going to refer back to page twenty-four and the Parks Canada land rent and the Alberta school funding formulas. At, when do we, when will we know those numbers? And the reason I ask is I think it would be prudent for us to go back to page one of the approved capital, or sorry, approved budget, where we summarize operations, community development, and so on. So then we'd have a better or current potential tax increase revised number, once we get those numbers from, from those entities. The 20% increase from Evergreen was maybe a little unexpected, and I'm hoping that the other increases aren't there because that total tax increase to residents and businesses could be substantially out of our control.
Deputy Waxer through to Counselor Melon. So every year during the budgeting process, I generally will look at history and predict and estimate what those amounts might look like. So far, things have gone very well with those estimates. And what occurs there is an over or under levy is applied to the next year if, if they are over or under. So then the next current year, they are applied to the tax calculations. Now, the Evergreens was part and parcel of the budget and how it was put through. I did have those numbers formalized before, before budget was presented to council. Alberta School and Parks Canada. I'm not sure if they will come in prior to the tax, let, tax bylaw process. Now, so that's why we have that over and under levy system so that they can be readjusted in the next year. And there was an estimate placed. However, being that a year that it is and things not being historically really predictable, they may change and might adjust what we have to look at for the next year. However, we have been very fortunate in the past to be very close in our projections.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that information and look forward to seeing those numbers when we get them.
Counselor Demota.
I have two more quick questions, and sorry for the extra pressure, put me on the spot there. Through you, Deputy Mayor Waxer, I just, they're completely separate, separate conversations. I'm just curious on the utility billing. Has the payment, payments of bills been on track with future or past years? Or is it a little bit slower just because of people contemplating the change?
Deputy Waxer through to Counselor Demota. At this time, I don't have the exact figures of what has been levied versus what has been paid. Also can bring that up next presentation meeting. It's easy and applicable, although it has been quite busy. So those, those figures were not part and parcel of this report.
That's, that's good. I don't think I was actually looking for figures. It was just more of like response overall, but that's, that's okay. I know that's a tough question to ask. We're only a month into it, and usually it takes a little bit of time to get those payments in. So the other question I had was related more to the funding news and the monies that we had requested and been granted from Perry's Can for tourism relief through, over COVID. So I don't, I can't remember actually seeing any physical numbers attached to that, but I know that that went to, towards some of our budget relief this year. And I was just wondering where we were at with that and if it was something that we could look at having a number on for our budget cycle.
Counselor Waxer through to, or sorry, Deputy Waxer through to Counselor Demota. Are you referring to the COVID Relief Fund Reserve?
No, I was, there was a federal, there were federal grants available for businesses and municipalities through Perry's Can, which was made available through Community Futures. So I know that we had applied or acquired on that, and there was an indication that we were getting some relief that way, and I, I don't recall seeing the number anywhere. That's why I was asking.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I can take that one for Counselor Demota. Counselor Demota, I believe you raised this towards the end of last year. So after the budget was set, administration has looked at that funding source. I've been trying to come up with ideas of how we might apply and what we could apply it to because it is not for general tax reduction purposes. That'd be for a specific program to enhance tourism or visitor experience. And there are some municipal services that we could maybe make a case that could apply to. So it is challenging in terms of grant programming that it is, it's got its own criteria, and it's been a bit of a challenge for administration to identify how we could make something that we're currently doing sound like it's something new, which is really what the program is about. Or if there's something completely new, developing a rational, well thought of sort of program that we could apply to, you know, we don't want to apply for money to do something that we wouldn't otherwise do. So it's a bit of a, you know, there is money that's out there. I understand that that source is not well subscribed. Like I think that there's the sort of pot just kind of sitting there, but it has been challenging for administration to really identify how we can apply for money to pet the grass. I mean, you know, a bit over simplistic there. We need to identify a specific program or service that will enhance tourism and create new tourism sort of opportunities for visitors. And I appreciate that, that we need to really think about how we, whether administration can imagine services like a pilot transit service that we had last year. If that were an ongoing program and we want to expand it, then we could potentially apply to that. The application process is something that's going to ring the council to identify the program.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer, for allowing that for me to inquire about that, and I understood it a little differently. I, and I appreciate the clarification on that because initially I thought we had access to funding for a tourism-based initiative hat, being a tourism, having a tourism-based economy where COVID affected some of the services or provisions for the visitors that may have lacked and we needed to recruit to re-enhance. So I don't know if that's any clear, but that's good to know that it's, it's a different thing. But if we can find something, that'd be great. I wasn't really looking towards having a, a budget buffer. I thought that that had already taken place.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I can, and just because I was able to find it, and just for council information. So the Tourism Relief Fund in the Prairie Provinces, this is one through Prairie Can. They specifically, you know, identify that it is for empowering tourism operators to create new or enhance existing tourism experiences and products to attract more local and domestic visitors, helping the sector reposition itself to welcome international visitors by offering the best Canadian tourism experiences. So you can see that it is, while municipalities are eligible applicants, the activities, the eligible activities which they give examples of helping tourism, projects that enhance tourism experiences, help tourism businesses adapt to the new normal and modernize their offerings, and encourage the adoption of more environmentally sustainable practices. Or another stream, destination development. For example, projects that position communities to take advantage of post-pandemic opportunities through strategic planning for medium and long-term investments, as well as supporting destination development prospects in line with federal tourism growth strategy. So you can see that they are really visitor focused there. And as the municipality would really need to say, okay, so what would we do that would have a benefit that would fit in this, that is something that wouldn't be a service that we would start up just for the sake of trying to get the money? Thank you very much.
Mayor Hyland. I appreciate you turning to me again, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Again, just a comment, but something arising from Counselor Melon's questions and a response from Mrs. Melunchak. And I just want to register that in respect to the over/under calculation and how close it has been over the years, Mrs. Melunchak responded that we've been very fortunate. I disagree. I, I don't think that it is at all a function of being fortunate other than to be fortunate to have staff, and particularly our director, who serves us so skillfully and professionally. This is not luck. This is the dedicated work of our director of Finance and Administration that allows it to be so close year after year. So again, not a function of fortune, but a function of skill and professionalism. And that's your ground record. So thank you for being so close every year. Much appreciated.
Thank you for that. Are there any further questions? But if not, I wonder if I could call for a motion to accept the Mrs. Melunchak's report on the Department of Finance and Administration for information. Counselor Wilson, all music, and all in favor. I believe it's now 10:40. Is everyone okay to move on to the next motion? We take a moment's break?
Five minutes.
Okay, take a five-minute break, get back at 10:45. Thank you. Thank you, we have everyone, thank you, we have everyone settled now, and welcome back. Then we move now to new business and the emergency management bylaw. And I wonder if an administration would like to speak to that.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Waxer. Director Nadine is fully in charge of this file, and she's going to be presenting the report.
Good morning Deputy Mayor Waxer and council. Thank you. Today before you is the first draft of the emergency management bylaw. It is a pretty significant document for our department, for the municipality as well. And there are quite a few changes from the previous version, which was passed in 2012. And that is the reason we are here at committee of the whole today to allow some time for discussion and questions before you see this returning to council for approval. Therefore, the recommendation in the report is that committee recommend council give first and second reading to bylaw number 247, the emergency management bylaw. And of course, that is subject to questions and answers and, and other items councillors might raise today. There has been a change in provincial legislation. In 2019, the emergency management act and the local authority emergency management regulations were updated. And therefore our bylaw has to follow that legislation and be updated as well. There are important processes and mechanisms that are set out in the bylaw and they do guide the development of our municipal emergency plan, but also set out the elected officials' roles and responsibilities. And importantly, the delegation of authority for staff members to be able to enact plans and manage community emergencies. So as we head into fire season, which we already are in wildfire season. This is an important file for myself and for our current director of emergency management and fire chief, Matthew Conti. And so we're hoping that we can get some progress on this file and pass a bylaw at, at whenever council is comfortable. But certainly so we have the right legislation in place as we're heading into the hazard season. Under discussion in the report, I've highlighted the parts that I suspected might generate a lot of discussion with council, including the emergency advisory committee. Is how council appoints specific elected officials to carry out the duties that are set out under the emergency management act. And we are proposing a change where currently all council members are appointed to the emergency advisory committee, but best practice as we are that's being communicated to us from our Alberta Emergency Management Agency field officers is that this should really be the mayor and two councillors. And council effectively delegates its authority under the act to that committee. And that allows us to go a bit more in depth at those committee meetings to review the plan. And the plan approvals is one of the big duties of that committee. So on an annual basis, our municipal emergency plan has to be approved. And also in the event of an emergency, declaring a state of local emergency is also a big item that we will potentially have to deal with. And therefore members of the committee are delegated to be able to approve that. The other key item is the appointment of a director of emergency management. So as I said, our fire chief is currently appointed to the position. And that is our recommendation going forward as well. And that is a key part of that delegation of authority that would enable the team to respond to a community emergency. And from there, the DEM can appoint deputy Dems and then that's how we would ensure that the right people are in place to take the leadership role of either incident commander or director of the ECC during an emergency. The bylaw itself is quite lengthy, has a lot of acronyms, has a lot of complex systems. I am happy to either do a quick walkthrough for council and go through the different sections or skip immediately to questions or areas of interest that councillors may have. And on this, I will turn it back to Deputy Mayor Waxer. Thank you.
Thank you so much Director Nadon. I wondered if there are questions. Councillor Demota.
I usually provide a buffer for people to warm up their questions. I'm ready to go. No, I just, I thank you for the report. I was really pleased to, to see the, that council, councils, councils participation. But I like the, the idea of best practice, not having it all as all of council, because that could be too cumbersome. I like the fact that the two councils should suffice and I would support that. Okay.
Mayor Island. Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer through you two. Mr. Nadon, I, I have questions and only respect to some technical issues regarding also the emergency advisory committee. In 3.3 of the draft indicates that there are two councillors shall be appointed, but I couldn't find details on how they would be appointed. The preamble, the background report indicates at the organizational meeting, but we're going to have to do this before the organizational meeting. I think we should do this now. So I just wonder whether there could be some language specific to that, just so that we can, we can make an appointment, potentially a one third reading of the bylaw. By council resolution or something and then otherwise that organizational meeting. Similarly, I, I just wanted to confirm it is under the heading emergency advisory committee, but 3.8 talks about council members. And I, I take it it means exactly that. It means all members of council, not members of the emergency advisory committee. And again, there's a requirement that something happened within 90 days of having taken the oath of office, which was taken more than 90 days ago. So it's not a big deal, but there should, can we just confirm that councillors have met that, that part somehow? And finally, I am unclear as to what is intended in section 4.5.2. During an emergency or disaster, the emergency advisory committee shall provide political, financial and resourcing support to the EMA. I'm not sure that the committee, as it's currently constituted, has authority over financial matters for the municipalities. So I, I just don't know how that's going to roll out and what that actually means. I simply require clarity of what's in front of me. And those are my only questions.
Deputy Mayor Waxer to Mayor Ireland, thank you for the questions. I'll start in reverse if, if that's okay. So in 4.5.2 about the role of the EAC during an emergency. As you may recall, Mayor Ireland, we've worked on this bylaw and whether, how, how many councillors are appointed to the committee versus if it's a full council versus if it's only specific individuals. So during an emergency, through the CAO, council would be kept apprised of what's happening. And any political, financial and resourcing, resourcing support that would be required by the team would ultimately go back to council as part of their. It is your regular duties, but applied during the framework of an emergency. So I think 4.5.2 might need to be reworked a little bit to reflect that, that might be the role of council during an emergency, but is it the role of the advisory committee is a, is a valid question. Certainly 4.5.3 is declaring the soul is an authority that is clearly delegated to the committee, but 4.5.1 even maintaining regular council member duties to be except possible, that would apply to all councillors and not just members of the EAC. So maybe there's an opportunity there to tweak how we're presenting that information, but certainly I think it, it raises an important item that council would be kept apprised and would have a role to play during an emergency and that would, that information would come through the CAO. And we might require some of those decisions to be made, namely around the financial aspect. Going back to 3.8, that is training, that's prescribed by EMA. And I think the intent here is that every council member would take the training and therefore would become eligible to be appointed to the EAC. And that is a requirement that applies to all council members and you have completed that training in February. And I think we might've been missing one or two, but we do have the documentation for that. And there might be an online option. So if, if you weren't able to attend, it's not a, it's not a deal breaker. It's something you can fix. But that, that morning we spent with our field officers in the multipurpose hall, that is the training, that is the municipal elected officials course that is mandated by the province. So most of our elected officials are in compliance already. And again, the 90 days is subject to training being available. And of course, we were dealing with health restrictions and, and items like that. So there is a bit of flexibility there from the province. If they're not offering the courses, that 90 days can be a bit longer. And then back to 3.3, the appointment of elected officials to the EAC. I, I am thinking along the same lines as, as Mayor Ireland in terms of as soon as this bylaws passed and our requirement for how many elected officials are appointed, we would need to modify these. So as per organizational meeting last fall, all of council members are currently in the EAC. So upon passing of the bylaw, we would have to modify that and by motion or by resolution, I think would be an appropriate method to do it. And, and each fall, there could be an opportunity to revisit who's, who's on there and getting, giving a chance to different elected officials to participate in the process perhaps.
Thank you for all that information that you, you know this stuff inside out. Thank you very much.
Councillor Wilson.
It's true. I was not available for the training previously in February, but I would like to work with you, you know, in the immediate future. Because I'm very anxious to be on board. So I would like to move ahead forward, but of course I understand I need to get the training in place before. So maybe discuss later.
Councillor Demota.
Just wanted to thank you, thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Thank you for your grace and not directing me when I was using ECC as opposed to EAC. I don't know if you got that, but thank you.
Councillor Melonchuk.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer and through you to Mr. Nadon. I'm going to touch on a few points. 3.4 says that the emergency advisory committee shall meet at minimum twice a year and more frequently as required. With that, I'm tying it into 5.3. That the purpose of the meeting is to provide updates, to receive updates from the EMA twice annually and more frequently. And then the EAC would report to council. Is that the intent of how that would all work?
Deputy Mayor Waxer through councillor Melonchuk. Yes. And I would like to highlight that the provincial requirement is at least once annually in conversation with Mr. Given. And given how emergency management is pretty top of mind and a high priority for our community, we've modified it. So in our own bylaw to increase that standard to twice a year. So provincial legislation says once a year, we would like to see twice a year and more frequently as, as required. And absolutely. So the, the emergency advisory committee are three elected officials, so the mayor and two councillors, and essentially receiving information from the agency, which is staff. So the director of emergency management, the fire chief would be leading the development of our plan, of our training, of our training events. So we have mandatory exercises and things like that. So those meetings would be an opportunity for those councillors to become apprised of what is happening with our municipal emergency planning. And once annually, the plan needs to be approved. So every, every second meeting or once a year, there would be a formal requirement for a motion from the committee to approve the plan. And that's part of provincial legislation versus the other meeting would be more of a, a status update and checking in with, with those council members appointed on any feedback on the plan or any political or fiscal considerations that may be more politically driven, that staff may not be fully considering. And, and so guiding and orienting and I think directing the work of the staff team, which is assembled as the EMA is the role of the committee essentially.
Thank you for that. And further to the reference to the EMA. I don't see in the documents for the bylaw, who makes up the EMA? It's implied that it's the MEP is ahead with the CAO next in line. And then there's a reference in 4.3.3 that you can appoint other people and the municipality's delegation of authority. So I think we might want to at least have the core individuals of the EMA identified in the bylaw.
Thank you for the question councillor Melonchuk. That is a conversation that we've been having internally. So with, with our fire chief and CAO and identifying who the members are that would be on the emergency management agency. And essentially, you're correct that the director of emergency management is, is the head and the lead and the person who convenes those meetings and, and organizes the work and, and delegates the work ultimately. And Mr. Given and I have discussed this quite extensively. And I don't know that putting the actual positions in the bylaw would serve us well. And the reason for that is we currently have a staff member who's highly trained and very dedicated to emergency management, who's our manager of childcare services. So it has not much to do with her actual position in her day to day, but more so an interest and a commitment and a dedication that we want on the team. That we want to be part of the agency because of her technical knowledge and skills in specific incident command system positions. So Mr. Given and I have gone back and forth a fair bit about that, where the positions in emergency management are somewhat different than our day to day duties and responsibilities. And I guess the reason I'm suggesting that I would prefer not to include it in the bylaws is that this might change depending on training and staff availability and how things progress in the organization and having the flexibility to change that would be a responsibility of the director of emergency management, I would suggest, of course, in collaboration with the CAO. But that is more of an administrative item that maybe doesn't need to be included in the bylaw would be my recommendation. And if it helps, our, our current draft proposal for who would be part of the emergency management agency would be the director of emergency management, who's the fire chief. Myself as director of protective services, the CAO. And then the other few positions, which I think it's two or three, would be people that are specifically trained in incident command system areas. So we have two managers and someone from finance that we think would be the, the core group, which I think we've established that we want to meet four times annually. And then when we have exercises or other activities, it is still the EMA. But broadly engaging other staff. So as we just did with our joint exercise with Parks Canada, staff that are involved in emergency management more generally are, are part of that team. But if you will, the executive of, of the EMA are the positions that I just mentioned.
Just to follow up to your point about the EMA. You, you've kind of articulated that it'd be good to meet four times annually. But it's not necessarily in the, where, where that specifically is stated that the EMA will do that in section five, which might be something we might want to add.
I'm certainly willing to take the information back and, and have a discussion internally with, with our CAO and director of emergency management and see if that is something we would like to recommend. This bylaw has, I guess it is also worth mentioning that is currently being reviewed by Alberta Emergency Management Agency. Because there are quite a few requirements that are set out in provincial legislation that says specifically these items need to be in the bylaw. So we were pretty confident we're in compliance, but we were having that reviewed before we returned to council for, for first and second reading. And that is not one of the items that is, is raised or, or directed in legislation, but for, for the sake of completeness and and setting out the duties and responsibilities and frequency of meetings. and setting out the duties and responsibilities and frequency of meetings could be included for sure.
Mr. Given.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Waxer. Just to further Director Nodan's point to Counselor Malmick's question. We did have a discussion about essentially including a terms of reference for both the the agency and the committee in the bylaw. And as Director Nodan said, we are also sort of subject to the format that's laid out by Alberta Emergency Management. And so I think that some of the terms that you're talking about, such as who would be on the the agency, how frequently the agency would meet would be things that we would have in terms of reference for the agency, but they would not form a part of the bylaw. So the bylaw is essentially council under the prescribed process from the province, council authorizing the creation of that body. And then the details of that body would be outside of the bylaw. So and I think that the intent there is to ensure that the agency remains as flexible as possible as Director Nodan said. We may have different staff changing and rather than having a specific position or positions identified in the bylaw, you know, it would mean that if something changed, we'd have to come to council, which could be a challenge in any other situation. And I think the same also goes for the frequency of meetings. Certainly, I think as Director Nodan has seen, she and her team have been doing a lot of work. Over the last while, the agency would have been meeting very, very frequently. There may be periods through the year, just in terms of seasonality where that might slow down. Or who knows if we get this entire thing up and running and, you know, it's been so well developed that we can, you know, sort of meet once or twice a year. I don't imagine that that will happen given the nature of risk. Director Nodan's even choking on the thought. But I think that the intent of the bylaw is for council through bylaw to establish the agency to delegate certain authorities to the agency. And then behind the scenes, the agency needs to have that flexibility to be as adaptable as possible, given certainly the nature of emergency planning and emergency.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I appreciate Counsel, Counselor Malmick's question and concern. And so while I agree with flexibility. It does, it does now when we read it, look a little open ended. So I wonder whether it might be appropriate to amend 5.1 to say that the emergency management authorities hereby established to consist of the core group. So it would be at least, I think, the down the CAO and the director. And then such other employees as they or one of them might appoint so that we do in fact do the delegation rather than just the establishment. If we're going to delegate, we have to be seen to delegate. So if we appointed the core group with authority to that group to appoint whoever else we think is appropriate, that might solve.
Seeing there aren't other hands up at the moment, I may take this moment to make for some of my thoughts. I think this is such an important bylaw and I was really, I read it very thoroughly and was very much appreciated all the level of detail. But I wondered whether in, it would be possible in the headings to use the full wording as, for instance, instead of the heading being sole, but it be state of local emergency. Or so that in the headings, we didn't use the acronyms because certainly it's my experience in the emergency world, there's a lot of acronyms and this does have lots, but I think under the gun where you may actually be using the bylaw as a, as a point of reference and in state of heightened worry, it may be helpful to have those lines more clear.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I think that is a, that is an excellent point. And certainly in the headings, we could not use the acronyms or spell it out, put the acronym in brackets and then through the clauses, leave the acronyms, but that would make it easier to reference in.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Are there any further questions? Is our councillor ready to make a motion? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I'm there to make a motion that committee recommend council give first and second reading to bylaw 247, the emergency management bylaw reflecting changes discussed at today's meeting.
Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, I think it could be helpful if somebody would specify which, discuss some of the things that could or wouldn't happen and council actually has which ones they really would like to have. So it's to be helpful to administration and ensure that the bylaw can go forward in the way that everyone at the council table is expecting it to in a timely way.
From my perspective, then I would reference with discusses with adjustments made as discussed today with respect to items 3.3. and 5.1. Is that sufficient?
Yes, Your Worship, I think so. The administration knows the nature of the discussion in those areas. We would prepare amendments and we'd highlight them to you when this comes to the regular council.
So Wilson.
I think as well as the long version of the headings.
Oh, yes, I'm sure.
Thank you. Can I call the question? All in favor? Thank you very much, Corrector Nodan and Mr. Given. I believe we now then move to the correspondence. The letter from Tourism Jasper supporting the Activity Centre Innovation.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, just to speak to this briefly, the letter is provided for council's information and for the community record. Mayor Ireland did share the contents of the letter at the last regular council meeting where council was discussing the project. The letter did not arrive in time for it to be part of the printed agenda. So it's here. So it's included in the record.
Thank you for that. Is there any questions or thoughts on that? Do we need a motion to accept your information? Then we move on to the motion action list. CAO, Given, do you have any, any updates or thoughts to share?
We do, Deputy Mayor Waxer. There are a couple of changes. First, you'll see on partial GB development information. We're forwarding that item to June. I think as I related in a previous meeting, this really is subject to the developer finalizing their application to Parks Canada. And Parks Canada seeing an application that they are ready to fully accept. So there's some negotiation going on between the parties. And I have spoken directly with the developer. They're happy to share that once they have that finalized application, so they will be showing the community what is actually being applied for or what will actually be built. So that is a really waiting on that external information. So we're recommending that that should just be forwarded to June. The garage suite feedback, there was, council did make a motion to support in principle the proposed garage suites inter policy at the previous council meeting. There was some direction to administration and provides some feedback to Parks Canada. That has been provided already with respect to side yard setbacks and other items. So that has been provided. Administration would suggest that that come off the list. And also the Communities of Bloom application, the Director of Operations has let me know that administration has made that application. Must be by the deadlines that item could come off as well. So administration would recommend that committee receive and approve the updates, the motion action list as noted.
Counselor Wilson.
Do you expect to hear any further feedback from Parks Canada about our recommendations or suggestions to the garage suites? Maybe not leading on. Although just so it doesn't fall off the radar. Is there, is there a timeline on Parks Canada's side to see some type of implementation of this policy?
Deputy Mayor Waxer for Counsel Wilson. So I don't think that there's any additional work that will happen through the municipality. We had a number of meetings with them, sort of at the administrative level to provide initial feedback. So that was incorporated in the draft policy that was reviewed by council. Council provides some additional feedback and we've provided administratively. Then really now it's up to Parks to consider whether they want to include those very specific items that are listed here. My understanding was that their next step from there was to release the draft policy to the public and begin to move forward with it. Additionally, council at the last regular meeting did provide that support in principle for the draft policy. So we don't see that there's any other work to come to the council table. I suppose if Parks releases the draft policy and council has an opinion about it, that they'd like sure Parks, you know, certainly could hit the council table at that point.
Just clarifying, like releasing the draft policy, or releasing the policy would be, you know, implementing the policy because it has been, I guess, that's released to the public for comment.
I don't know that Parks has released it to the public for comment. I don't know that they've but I'm not sure that Parks, I certainly won't speak to Parks process about giving public input. We did have an opportunity as the municipality of Jasper to provide our comments that was administratively and at the council table that comments been provided. Now it's really up to Parks to decide what they're going to do with the policy and whether they're going to do it.
Deputy Mayor Waxer, through you to Mr. Given. Did you just confirm please, Mr. Given, that when the matter of S block parking returns next month, that is intended to policy level discussion about the use of the S block parking lot rather than S block parking. Generally, because there is a difference. There's a parking issue in S block, but there is an issue with the use of the parking lot. And that's what is going forward?
Your Worship, Deputy Mayor Waxer. I think it's actually both. I don't believe that a discussion about the S block parking lot and our policies regarding how we encourage use that can, can be divorced at all from however everybody else parks around S block anyways. I mean, there really is a question about what is our policy approach to people parking on the sides of the streets in S block? Do we have a better policy, take a greater level of enforcement to encourage them to find off-street parking, which would include one of the alternatives being S block parking lot. So they are intermingled.
Well, I appreciate that and I appreciate and the expected fullness of the report. Because my recollection was that when previous council looked at this, it was more specific to use of parking lot. But I agree that that use influences other uses. And so if it's, it is a broad scope relevant. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is our councillor ready to make a motion to accept the updated motion action list? Counselor Teller-Herempe?
I make that motion to accept the motion action list, make the adjustments.
All in favor? The next item on the agenda is the opportunity for councillors to speak to their representation on boards and meetings. And I wonder if anyone has anything to to speak to. Counselor Teller-Herempe?
Tomorrow I attend early childhood and all person being in person, 2:00 p.m. And next week I do go to the Oberon Mountain Lodge for a two-day strategic panel of the Edward Bloom Foundation.
Thank you.
Counselor Hall? Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. Last Wednesday I attended an adult community conversation, first in person, which was great. Feeling amongst adults is optimism and people feel like things are going moving very quickly and the town's opening up and people can see very happy about it. We also at that meeting met the, let's see, the Director of the Conservices of Alberta, so there was quite a discussion on that. I also attended my part one of the Zoom Basic Library Board Basics and I will finish that off tomorrow. And tomorrow night I'll be at the Library Board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Waxer. I just want to confirm details of two upcoming meetings. Tomorrow, we had a meeting scheduled with Parks. I saw something flash by my screen yesterday to cancel it, but I think it's not really canceled. It's a meeting that Mr. Hallman's canceled, but we're still meeting. And I just want to confirm that that councillors are aware and still available for that meeting. So we can run 10 a.m. and within.
Deputy Mayor Waxer for Mayor Ireland and for all of council, that meeting is, the Parks officials is still on. The cancellation of council by the scene was, we essentially had a municipal calendar invite and a invite from Parks Canada. So the municipal calendar invite, you had two invites. So we canceled the one that had less details, leaving the one from Parks so that they could see who the attendees were for the same meeting. It is for 10 a.m. tomorrow and we get the Jasper and Susan's.
Thank you for that. And the other upcoming meeting, I have alerted councillors earlier about proposed meeting, well, upcoming meeting with the executive of the Jasper Art Center of Commerce related to utility rates scheduled for Thursday. And because of constraints at the venue, I have asked for an indication from the councillors who will and will not be attend. So we can make sure that we have room for everybody. I I think that I have had one confirmed response. But are there others who will be available to meet with the chamber? And I believe that's 2 o'clock on Thursday.
I suggest I could not, I could not confirm. So I'm going to see how I agree myself up for the meeting. I hope that there's space available if I do slide in.
I'm the same. I would love to attend. I just want you to organize as scheduled. It is the next full reforestation date, but I think I'd be able to go.
I'm trying.
And I'm not able.
Thank you all for that. I'll pass that along.
Any other updates on meetings? That's a no.
Just to advise council that I did attend the fire smart information session last night, as did Deputy Mayor Waxer. Wasn't well attended. But Greg did a great presentation and the people who were there were engaged and look forward to this Saturday in the Community Fire Smart cleanup.
Yes, and I was going to just mention that there are 10 fire smart communities. Or fire smart, I think they're called communities, who will be or fire smart, I think they're called cooties, who will be hosting events throughout the community this weekend. So I think that's real kudos to Director Nodon and I think other municipal staff for ensuring that the community was aware of the opportunity to apply for these grants. And kudos to members of the community who stepped up and cooked those grant applications. Thank you. I guess we move on then to upcoming events. And is there anything that needs to be added, other than what's already on the list? If not, the next item on the agenda is an in-camera session of council. I'm wondering if I can have a motion to move in camera.
Please allow me to.
Thank you. All in favor? I apologize. I should have said that we, that council does not believe there'll be any further business as we move back out of town. And so with this, that is the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you.